Earlier this year, they scored our cash reserves, our fund reserves at a triple A level. So we're doing well and keeping funds on hand.
Thank you, John. And so as I move forward with the presentation here, just a bit about how we look at balancing the budget. We, when we go through this, this long exercise of balancing the budget, we're not just looking at revenues and expenditures. But we're also looking at the county organization in and all of the legs that hold up that stool. So we're looking at how the, the budget impacts the, our human resources and human capital, how it impacts our public services. And how it infrastructure, or how it impacts our infrastructure and management system. So and we're no different than any large, public, private organization. You know, every organization has to look at this balanced system of making sure that the, the money balances, but also that your, that your resources like human capital and infrastructure are taken care of while you're still continuing to provide the service that the public expects. Bridget? And this goes into a little bit more detail on that as we looked at board or budget policy goals. The, the ones that drove the, the, the creation of this particular budget, number one was financial stabilization, COVID-19 programming, public safety, economic and community development, supporting vulnerable populations, strengthening management systems, inclusion and equity, addressing capital needs and supporting human capital needs. Financial, so to start into these financial stabilization, I'm going to try to go through these fairly quickly. But financial stabilization, we have at this point in time, a structurally balanced budget this year. That was not the case several years ago when we were projecting large imbalances. Our five-year plan shows relative balance. Again, it is tight, but it shows relative balance. And that balance is predicated on some cautious and prudent assumptions about future revenue growth as well as future expenditure growth. Bridget? Public safety. So as John said, public safety represents around 132 million or 75% of the general fund budget and supports offices like the sheriff, 911, the courts, coroner, crime lab and the prosecutor. And I'm not going to go into all of, into depth on all of the, the work of all of these departments. The budget document that you've received doesn't even go into all of that. What I've tried to do is just highlight some key initiatives that really bring out some of the board's policy direction. For instance, in our public safety function, trying to ensure that we are focusing on diversion and reentry as opposed to simply incarceration in concert with the judiciary and the, and the sheriff. So for instance, the budget supports continuation of our lead, the law enforcement assisted diversion program to get people into treatment around the justice system, around the criminal justice system. It funds the specialty courts and municipal and common pleas, et cetera, where there's a focus on mental health and substance abuse in veterans. It funds our electronic monitoring division in our, in probation and in the courts to make sure the judges have a strategy for getting low risk, lower risk inmates out of the justice center and onto some sort of community control. We, we continue to fund the community alternative sentencing center, which is an investment that we made a couple of years ago in, in cooperation with the courts, again, to provide a low risk or a, a way to get low risk inmates out of the justice center into a lower risk, lower security environment where we can provide the treatment that those folks need so that they don't recidivate. And we do that at a much lower cost than it would cost per, per diem and per person for them to be in the justice center. We are investing this year in the sheriff's peace officer academy. This is a relatively, this is a, is a new program. This is a program that we, the sheriff has put in place and the, and the budget funds it. This is an effort by the sheriff to pay for certifications of corrections officers for police op, for formal police, peace officer training. Whereas before they had to pay this on their own cost, out of their, out of their own pockets. This program will put in place a system where the sheriff is paying for this in exchange for those those corrections officers staying on for a longer term with the sheriff's office to help avoid some of the churn that they're seeing in the sheriff's office and corrections officers. I believe the sheriff will be here next week and I'm sure that this is one of the areas that she'll be walking through with the board. As well as our community oriented policing and intelligence led operations. We have a, a roughly $3 million, human dollar allocation of which the county has matching funds in place to put in place an intelligence led operation with our sheriff's department specifically in Lincoln Heights to help address shootings, murders and crime in Lincoln Heights. The budget also retains the $5.911 detail rate that the board had lowered from its most recent high of $16 down to 15. This collectively saves the communities in Hamilton County about $3 million a year to their public safety budget. So that, the, the subsidy by the county to the 911 department and the reduction of the community fee means that these other companies, partner communities can put more money into their public safety budgets. The budget invests in community and economic development, specific, a few things specifically. Our economic development partners are funded through, through the $7 million that's in this fund as well as ancillary economic development programming. So this year we put in place a community revitalization grant that we are just rolling out for the first time right now. This puts, or this budget continues that. The budget also puts in place a $1 million community impact grant program. Don't expect, we don't expect that to be the formal name of the program if we continue on with it and if the board ultimately approves the, the budget. But this was responding to the board's desire to continue to be stronger partners with our first string suburbs and to focus in on one or two communities to provide intensive, intensive resources and intensive assistance over a period of time to help revitalize communities a few at a time. It also funds a small business office within HCDC to help with the unique needs of what is a driving force in our local economy, and that is small businesses. It continues to fund our site readiness program, affordable housing programs through the American Rescue Plan, as well as a new permitting system through our planning and development office. Bridget? Supporting vulnerable populations. So the budget supports all the work of job and family services, supports veteran services. It supports our levy work plans, our ARP planned administration. I'm not going to go into all the work of job and family services. We'll have them at one of our staff meetings in the upcoming, at our upcoming work sessions to walk through some of their most, all of their programming. But some of their most critical programs, we talked just a little bit earlier about the kinship stipend program that we have put in place. That would be included in the, in JFS's work. Our 513 relief operations are funded through this budget, or the expansion of the QRT program, which as the board is aware, we recently received a grant to expand our, our quick response team countywide from a two-day week to a five-day week and to target hotspots throughout the county. That's included in this budget. The next, we just saw the passage of our children's services levy. Next year, we have three levies on the ballot, senior services, mental health, indigent care. And this budget funds and facilitates the tax levy review committees review of those three levies. It also, the budget also funds the creation of a new youth office over at JFS to ensure that we are streamlining and coordinating all of our various youth programs, making sure that emancipated youth are better connected with jobs and employment and not just focusing on JFS connected youth, all youth, but, but leveraging all the programs that JFS has to, to bring greater levels of service and coordination to the programming that the county does. Bridget? Management systems. So one of the things that we always like to look at is how are we doing in terms of the various systems that we have in place to do the work of the board, whether that's a person, a, a, a system involving people or, or infrastructure or technology. So a couple of things that we're looking at in this budget is the recommendation of a government affairs coordinator. There is a lot of work being done and a lot of linkages between the county and our partners at the state and the federal level. We've seen over the past couple of years, just from the state perspective, how the state's actions have impacted, whether it is indigent defense funding, whether it is the ability for counties to operate remotely, whether it is various COVID programming, state capital bills. There are, is a large connection between the work of the county and state government as well as on the federal level. We saw with the CARES Act and ARP and, and actions that the federal government takes on the clean water side of things that impact Metropolitan Sewer District. But putting in place a position who, the, the role of which will be to coordinate all those efforts. Right now, those, that coordination is done in a very fragmented way. And there's not one person that has responsible, responsibility for that coordination. We are also looking to better coordinate our equity and inclusion system with our purchasing system. So there's money in this budget to ensure that our, that our disparate systems of where we track our equity and inclusion as well as our purchasing can better communicate with each other, which is critical, I think, to the board's goals of, of improving our efforts there. We also have some major systems planning that we'll be doing next year on our jail management system, the finance system, recorder system, and our purchasing system, as well as our coroner's lab system. Bridget? Capital improvements. John touched on this briefly, but we've got a lot of capital work that's going to be happening next year. Everything from a 911 EMA consolidation to the Black Music Walk of Fame construction down at Banklot 28. We have the satellite office funded through our ARP programming, Findlay Mark, a construction of a new garage at Findlay Market. We have money in the ARP plan, as the board is very well aware, to help with and to help support the relocation of the gun range in Evendale. $3 million in deferred capital maintenance in county facilities to address the highest level, most critical capital pair repairs that are needed. And finally, the, your budget and the budget, in your budget book is a 2022 capital improvement plan. That includes a large list of prioritized projects, some of which are in the design phase, but none of which can advance to construction until they come forward to the, the Board of County Commissioners for approval. So I just want to make sure the board is aware that when you legislate a budget, at the end of the day, the capital improvement program that is in that budget is, it is not authorization for the administration to go and begin construction of those projects, but they will have to come back separately for construction to the board. John? Inclusion and equity. The budget funds the continuation of our economic disparity study. We also put an earmark aside of, I believe it was $250,000 in our general fund reserve for initiatives that may come in advance of the completion of that study. I think we had talked at the board level about making sure that we can move forward on certain things that might come out as recommendations even before the disparity study is done. So we heard the board on that and put in place that, that earmark. We also have in place a recommendation for an additional staff person to really help on the ground in all of our departments with the procurement work specifically of departments to help, to make sure that we are coordinating that work, coordinating the work with vendor community and making sure that we're drawing those connections to help improve our numbers on the, on our inclusion procurement work. Bridget? On the human capital side, the budget supports a, first of all, just some notes. The general fund employees, we have 2,446 FTEs under this budget. That's up slightly from last year. We see a lot of, we've seen some growth in the sheriff's office in particular as it relates to the peace officer academy program, as well as some, some growth in the public defender's office, given the fact that that office is now essentially 100% reimbursed from the state. All, the all employees, all funds budget totals around 4,669 FTEs. The budget includes a 3% general wage adjustment for non-bargaining staff. It includes funding for market compensation adjustments for Board of County Commissioner departments. It includes staff, a continuation of staff training through NACO, which we started, we put through the first two classes. We'll put, be putting 40 people through NACO, High Performance Organization Training. We'll continue that next year. It puts in place a, a reinstitution of the tuition reimbursement program for staff, which was discontinued years ago during the, the great recession. And it continues our employee health clinic, which we continue to see cost savings when people engage with our employee health clinic. Bridget? Very briefly, risks. There are risks with this budget as there are with any financial plan. John mentioned one of them in his comments, and that is a slowdown in sales tax growth. We don't anticipate to see the, the aggressive sales tax growth that we saw this year and at the end of last. But we have budgeted accordingly. We've budgeted cautiously for that. There's always the risk of financial downturn, which could depress various revenue streams. Inflation, as we see the cost of goods and services and labor continue to increase. And we also have the continued risk of departments overspending their budget based upon me, emergent needs of those departments. And finally, commissioners on public hearings, we've talked with board offices about two outside public hearings, one of which would be Wednesday, November 10th, out at Silverton Town Hall. And the other one, which would be Wednesday, November 17th, at Forest Park Senior Center. I believe we were also going to notice one for here during one of our normal legislative meetings as well. So we'll make sure that we coordinate with the board on that. In November and December, we will also be using our commissioner staff meeting sessions for work sessions on functional areas. We're also looking to pull together one final meeting as well of all departments to do a, a budget meeting with all departments. It would probably be in early December with the idea of tentative board approval being on December 14th with a fallback date of December 16th. So commissioners, with that, I just want to, number one, thank you for your guidance and policy vision on setting this budget. It really does start, any budget starts with concrete and direct policy guidance. This board has given a lot of, of high level and specific ideas that have helped inform where we went with this budget. I also want to thank John. I want to thank Holly Christman. I want to thank all of John's staff for all of the work that they did in pulling this budget together. As John said, this starts back in, really in the midsummer, starting to put this together. It's a lot of work, as the board, I know, is, is aware. So I want to thank him and his staff. Also want to thank all of the department heads, elected officials of the county and just all the employees of the county for all the work they continue to do in making sure that Hamilton County is a great place to live. So with that, commissioners, happy to answer any questions today. At the same time, we have several work sessions coming up and staff meeting. And at this point in time, the budget, just for folks who may be watching at home, up until this point in time, the, the budget is the recommendation of the administration. And at this point in time, it, it goes to the board who has the authority and the ability to change it, modify, do whatever they want to make it their, their own. So happy to work with you over the course of the next several weeks to bring forward a budget in '22 that makes the county proud.
Thank you so much, Jeff and John, for all your hard work. That was a, a brief summary, but a great summary because we have a, a four times as big here. And I certainly appreciate all the work that was done. I'm thinking the most efficient way would to be specifically to go through these, that, the PowerPoint that was presented to us. And then as we move forward in our staff meetings, we can go through specifics that are farther down in this book, if it's okay with my other colleagues, but to specifically look at what was presented today. I, I just say in general, and I'll open it up for both of my colleagues. It's just remarkable. I say, I would say miraculous with the increase of the reserve that we have during a pandemic. We remained efficient. We allocated the monies that needed to be allocated. And we were just very clear that we wanted to listen to the people. We wanted to listen to the department head, staff. We want to also make sure that our work plan that we had as a commission was fulfilled. And so we're working toward that goal. And so we, we wanted to make sure, of course, that we didn't negatively impact our financial stability within the county. And I think we're moving toward that. Everything just, I have quite a few questions in the PowerPoint, but I will allow Vice President Reese to maybe go first if you'd like. Or just made a few points. Nothing that, would you like for me to? Okay. You want me to start?
Yeah.
So just a couple of comments, because it was very clear where we're headed. I wrote a few notes as it relates to, well, one of my concerns was the public safety. And we know that we were saying 75% of the public safety allocation of our budget. What had, what was it before in our budget before? I mean, when we say 75%, we just want to, of course, I'm not talking about anything about defunding any police. But what I'm saying, if it's 75%, then do we go to 80 and 85%? And we know how market rates have increased and people are looking at salaries and wanting to increase salaries. But how much was our allocation before on our last budget?
I, I believe that the, the 2021 general fund budget was at least 70% of public, public safety, including public safety and, and criminal justice, so including the sheriff and the court systems. So I'm, I'm going to say around 70%, John. So we might have seen a little bit of an uptick this year, but.
Maybe a little bit of one. We can get some exact numbers to you, but it hasn't varied substantially as a percentage of the budget.
So as we look at relatively public safety and other entities, then Hamilton County, is that pretty steady as it relates to expenditures for public safety? Like Franklin County?
Yeah, well, certainly, I think across the board and local government, police and fire are going to be the significant portion of the budget. Obviously, we don't have that, but we do have the courts, right? So yeah, I think that by and large, from a county perspective, while counties can be different depending upon levies that are in place, et cetera, you're going to find the operations of the sheriff and the courts comprising a significant portion of the budget, whether they are all roughly three quarters, I don't know. But we did do some work a couple of years ago with the CBC where we did, took a, a high level look at the county's budget in comparison to others around the state. And we can, we can check on that and see how we, at least how we compared back then, which I think would have probably been in 2019 or so. As we can check on that from those numbers.
And I'm very much aware that public safety normally takes the, the major portion of the budget. So I just wanted to know how we are relative to other counties. But I was also looking at the major expenditure drivers. Bridget, you don't have to necessarily put it up if you can't find it, but personnel is 68% of our expenses. And I guess one of my concerns is that we're trying to get market rate for those that are working for us and how that amount of expenses possibly may increase because we're trying to, people, we're trying to retain our employees and then also get in great employees, but our level of pay is sometimes so much below. And so with 68% of our expenses being personnel, what do we foresee as we raise those salaries for those people that we're trying to get in? The percentage may increase.
Yeah, a couple of things here, and I'll turn it over to John for some specifics if you'd like. First is the, the budget does incorporate dollars for a market rate adjustment of Board of County Commissioners departments. We've also been working over the, over really this past year for, on some market rate adjustments in some of the elected official offices where, in all of them, I, I want to thank the elected offices who have all been very cooperative on this when they've come to, to me and said, look, we have a, a significant problem attracting, say, juvenile corrections officers or, or, or legal staff or whatever it is. And my response has always been the same, and that is, we understand that as an elected official, you have the ability to do something, you know, obviously within your budget, but before you do something, I want you to work with the budget office and make sure that we're not doing anything that is going to radically throw the county's financial plan out of, out of whack. And all of them have done that. So we have worked with some, some of the elected offices along the way so that this budget does incorporate not only board market adjustments, but some market adjustments and some of our key other elected offices as well. So like you're, the concern is well, is well taken that obviously if, if we get imprudent in that regard, there's no quicker way to derail the financial stability of the county. But right now, I think the, the adjustments that we've seen, we still see ourselves on, on a good path right now. But we'll, this is something that we'll have to watch very close. John?
Yeah, I think, I think you've covered that well. I think that the percentage can move for various reasons as well. So certainly, we're, we're looking at investments into human capital, but we're also looking at investments into building capital as well. So as we make some of those contractual service investments, that, that increases the, the share on non-personnel. So there's pressures on both sides of that equation. And I think it stayed, it's like, like the criminal justice piece, it has stayed relatively stable over time.
Thank you. And I think lastly, but maybe Jeff, at another time, you can explain to the public about our inability to have jurisdiction over the sheriff department as it relates to expenditures and also the court system. Even though we can ask them, kind of watch your spending, we don't have a lot of those that are elected. Those departments that are elected, we don't have a lot of power to say, slow down what you're spending. So that would be something I think that the people would like to know about how we can, you know, they've been working fairly well with us, but we don't have any power over their ability to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's a good point, Commissioner. And yeah, the board's authority does vary depending upon the elected office that we're talking about and whether there are certain offices that have more direct and affirmative control over the budget that is set. As you indicated, though, we have been very fortunate to have partners in those elected offices who I think understand that we sit, we swim or sink together and that one action of, or action of one department is going to impact the, the, the rest of the county as well. So fortunately, we, we, we continue this year to see good partnerships in that, in that regard. But it, it remains one of those tenuous risks as well as we move forward.
Thank you. And as we go to management systems, it was mentioned as an example, equity inclusion system coordination and that we firmly commit to, and you said it somewhat in your statement, firmly commit to additional staffing in that area, not only for procurement, but for other areas that we're looking at as it relates to equity and inclusion. I did have a question. You don't have to answer it now, but under that same example, you have purchasing system, coroner lab system. I'm just a little bit questioning, questionable about what improvements they need in their purchasing system since we just spent so much money in that corner, that new building and.
Madam President, I think there may have been a comma missing there. It was purchasing, it, it should have been purchasing comma. I think I saw that. I think there may have been a comma missing. So those are two separate systems. So I apologize for that, for that oversight.
Okay. Alrighty, um. Let me guess real quick. And I believe that was all that I had. Once again, I just want to thank both of you for pulling this together and, and setting up our budget hearings. And it's just the beginning because of course we have to include our public and some of the staff when they come in and give their opinion of what's going on as it relates to expenditure. So I'll pass it over to Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation. This is my first budget as a county commissioner, not my first budget, done a city budget and a state budget before. And I know Commissioner Drehouse can appreciate this is a, a lot thinner than the state budget. Thousands of pages with very little time to, to read it and we had to make quick decisions. So thank you for this. And I've been going through it, cross-checking it with the PowerPoint and this one, because this will be the binding document of what we're going to actually fund and gets down to numbers. Wanted to say that my focus is that we have sustainability, but also we invest in growth opportunities. We want our, we want to invest in things that will help our county grow, keep our county and make it more affordable for people to be able to, who, people who live here can stay here, and people who want to move here can afford to move here. And also having the technology to be a place of growth. Wanted to pull up a couple of things on the PowerPoint. Let's pull up first the budget policies and goals. And certainly as we get further into this, we will be adding more to it. Most of the things on here definitely agree with. I would add, however, technology, youth, senior citizens. We don't have anything really for seniors here. We found that kind of even with our, we have some of the state programs or if you are on social security or however, you couldn't really qualify for some of the. or however, you couldn't really qualify for some of the, um, some of the, uh, CARES dollars and COVID dollars. So you're just kind of out there. Uh, the homestead program requires you to every single year, which is not our fault, is obviously something the state did. But, you know, like I said, people don't get younger, so I don't know why they have to keep proving that they're older every year. Um, but there's nothing in there, we don't have anything carved out for seniors who have been hit hard. I mean, they can't go out and get these additional jobs. Uh, they try maybe, but it's very difficult of people who, um, and they're, and some of their retirement funds were hit during this COVID time, a lot of, of retirement accounts were hit. So they don't get that money up. And so I just wanna, as we get further into it, I get deeper into the budget, I'm looking at something that we could carve out specifically for seniors and, um, as Commissioner Dre House calls it, legacy folks. We need to have something here for the senior citizens that have paid their dues, worked their butts off and own their homes and now have been hit as well, but there's nothing for them. So we wanna do that. The other thing I would add on here is housing, because as you know, the board, housing is a big issue. We're putting forty million dollars into housing. We're leveraging CDBG dollars that we have also for housing. So I think that should be a goal, since we're looking at all, this is all funds budget, I would add housing to it. Um, and so I would add technology, because we're gonna put money in broadband. Um, one of my main focuses to have Hamilton County, uh, is a, uh, smart county, uh, technology. We saw too many pockets, uh, too many municipalities did not have, uh, access to wifi. And then we got hit with COVID, and it was like, oh, my God, what do we do? Uh, we have done some things with, um, uh, helping some of the schools. We've done some things with some of the smaller municipalities, uh, but now we put money in broadband. So I think technology should be good, a big part. We know that, um, in Cincinnati, we got Cincy Tech and Cincy Fuse, but I want that countywide, no matter where you live, village, township, or small city, we are ready to go, and we're technology-based. Um, so I would put technology, youth is our future. It can't be a side note, uh, we can't be, we only think about youth when it's crime, and then we say, oh, what do we do with the youth? We've got a lot of youth that's doing it right. We've got a lot of people that go away to college. When they come back, I want internships. We want, uh, we want them to be able to come here and they become the next administrators, city managers, or what have you. So I wanna have a robust youth, not just if you're poor, not just if you're poor. I don't care if you're poor, you're middle-class, youth is the future. I want them in technology, I want them in government, I want them in all these different components. So we want a robust youth program that doesn't have financial constraints on it. Um, so youth would be added, senior citizens would be added, housing would be added, and small businesses. Uh, everyone, every county in this country has been hit with COVID. So now we're at an equal playing field. The question's gonna become, when we come out of it, who comes out and rises up? Who invested in the recovery? What did they do? And I want people flying here to Hamilton County, Ohio, because there's more than one Hamilton County, Hamilton County, Ohio, asking us, how did we do it? Well, you gotta do that through small businesses. The data shows that more people will be opening small businesses, many who stayed at home during COVID and said, hey, I'm not going back to that other industry, uh, because maybe, uh, they didn't care about me. I didn't, they let me go, they sold the company, I wanna do my own thing. Um, smaller, uh, younger people were coming out saying, hey, I wanna own my own business, women, minorities. It is growing, it is the growth, it's the backbone of this country. So we need to have not just, I see it here, and we'll get more detail, but a hundred thousand dollars just for HCDC to do some advising, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about for the first ever Hamilton County Small Business Division that focuses on recruiting, retaining, and growing so that we can be the number-one county in Ohio. We'll start there, and then the number-one county in the country. This is where you wanna open your business, because we have invested in everything that a small business needs. Um, and so, and I want that, whoever does that, I want that group to also be diverse. ACDC is very good, but they're not diverse. We want to have diversity, uh, and we wanna be aggressive. So anyway, those were, first of all, our policy, I would add those goals. I'm sure my, um, colleagues would have probably others, but that's one of my recommendations. The other slide I wanna go to is the slide that talks about all funds and where our money is going, the overview. Okay, so this is an interesting slide. This is great, because I love to get a clear picture of everything. And John, you do a great job of that, helping me get a clear picture. Um, so we have, of course, what our total budget is, but in there, you look at jobs of family services. Look at the high number that that is of our budget. Now, I know that some of that is the levy dollars that come in, and we, without the levy, we probably couldn't do these things. We would be almost bankrupt on the, the mandate that the state gives us. They give us a unfunded mandate. You gotta do these things, but you gotta pay for them. We are getting ready to hire the next jobs of family services director. I ran on jobs of family services, because I think this is an opportunity to change the way that we do business, more to a customer-service-friendly base, more to a mobile base. That's what the five-one-three relief bus is like a pilot. How do we take Hamilton County services to the people? Uh, we've been to almost, uh, over fifty-plus locations. Majority of those people didn't even know we offered these services, because they never had to come to the government for anything. So with this, it's very important, if we're spending this much money, whoever the next person is, and that's why I believe that our board, uh, certainly the administrator makes the final decision, but they should, we should have some input, because look how much money we're spending. These are things that we vote on every week. Every week, we got millions of dollars coming through here, and we can't just be a rubber stamp. We got to drive it and say, this is what we want. This is the vision for jobs of family services, and we want a director that can take us to the next level. It's a new day, new technology, new science, we're going new. And so that's why I'm very, I keep my eye on not just this budget, but who's gonna be in charge of it? Who will be the next jobs of family services director, and what direction do we need to go? Then the other thing you look at, the next highest number is stadiums and parking. These are restricted funds, I'm sure, I'm, I'm aware of, but even with that, we're looking at contracts. And right now, they said, if we don't get a disparity study, we can't have inclusion. And that's why it's important, before I vote for this budget, I, we got a fourth-quarter report on what we were doing as it relates to the contracts with the stadiums. We spent sixteen million dollars, and in that fourth quarter, only fourteen hundred dollars. A check, what do we call it, a stimulus check, one stimulus check to a person. Fourteen hundred dollars we spent with minority businesses, zero with women. So now we're in quarter three, getting ready to go to four, and we still don't have it. Before we vote on this, I need quarter one, two, and three to see what have we been doing down at the stadiums with the parking? Uh, who has the contracts for the parking? Who does the upgrade for the parking? Because that has to be in our budget to see how do we be more inclusive? We can't have taxation without participation. We're equal when it's time to pay the taxes, but then when it's time to get the contracts, they say you gotta get some extra paperwork. If Uncle Sam can find us, we can find him, to be able to participate. So we want those, and I would like to get those numbers before we even vote on the budget. So those are some big numbers. Uh, I wanna clarify on the zoo, that is a tax levy. Uh, so people are watching, they say, oh, man, you giving the zoo seven million dollars? No, the taxpayers, you gave the zoo seven million dollars. Those are pass-through dollars, if I'm not, uh, mistaken. Uh, the lodging tax, that's another one to keep our eye on as we're looking at, what are we gonna do with a new, uh, hotel, right? A new hotel, uh, those dollars, and I wanna say that the music festival, those dollars should go up. The music festival, Cincinnati Music Festival, uh, that brings in about a hundred and seven million dollars in economic impact, we had to cancel for two years. It's coming back next year and hopefully partner with our Black Music Walk of Fame. So that number, we should be able to get some of that money, uh, that number should come up next year. So I just wanted to highlight those, uh, components in terms of this was very, very helpful, uh, for me to see, uh, what we are, uh, doing and what our money is. Our debt ratio is pretty low, so I just wanna say, great job on that. Uh, so I wanted to highlight that. The other thing that I had, my other items are as follows. Number one, I'd like to see an organizational chart. I need an organizational chart on who's doing what and who reports to who. A lot of times, we're asked to add this and add that. I have no idea what the organizational chart, I never go into an organization without knowing where is the organizational chart? Who does what, who reports to who? And, um, I, so I could get a clear picture on all of our employees in terms of what we actually do. Maybe there's some things we can do a little more efficiently without adding to that table. Or maybe there's some other places that we need to add to the table. Um, I am interested in knowing about this government affairs person. Uh, just be honest with you, we have a lobbyist that we pay in Washington, I believe. And the question is, if we have government affairs, will that lobbyist go away? But we just can't keep adding on in that area. We just, there are some other areas, uh, that is well-needed. The five-one-three relief bus, I just came from Withrow High School, they were there today. Uh, people will be happy to know the basketball team got their shots today. So I'm very excited about that, but people are lined up. We don't have enough staff at that bus. So I don't wanna spend all my money with folks running to Washington if we already got a lobbyist. I need some people on the ground to help the citizens right here. Uh, and I don't think we have enough to cover the popularity of the five-one-three relief bus. Whether we're in Cleves, whether we're in Harrison, we have just run out of, or whether we're in Avondale or, or Ebbingston, as we are today, we are running out of staff. Um, e- inclusion, um, I'm, I know that we need some additional people, but I think our focus has to be on, there's no sense, I've told it before, there's no, we have a thing called a bold list, and that's good, but there's nothing bold about not getting contracts. The number-one goal of the Economic Inclusion Office is to have diversity in hiring and to get contracts. If we don't have the disparity study, we don't need extra people. There's nothing to, zero, fourteen hundred dollars, I don't need more staff. I need this study completed so we can start getting something done. Um, that inclusion study will only cover about fifteen percent of businesses, that's your bigger minority businesses. The question is, what about this other eighty-five percent? That's the people we're hitting now through, um, the grants that we have. So that's why we need the Small Business Office to hit that eighty-five percent. Maybe they never do business with us, they may not be big enough, but they are taxpayers here. We want those restaurants to stay open. We want those, uh, bars and restaurants to be able to be open, we want those beauty and barber shops to be open. We want those, uh, uh, boutiques to be able to stay open. So we still gotta have something for that group as well as this group. So, um, as far as that organizational chart, I certainly have more questions on when, what is the timeline of the completion of the inclusion study? Because we just don't need just a lot of people sitting in there, and then there's fourteen hundred dollars worth of business that's going out the door. Um, and I'm sure we're, uh, improving that. Um, my other thing is, we sold some bonds, um, we were excited about that. Where does those dollars go? Is it back to the parking fund, or is that going to the general fund?
We sold parking bonds in the spring, right? And those went, um, those mostly, those were all reimbursements of project accounts. Um, that allowed us to move some dollars back from the projects into our various accounts, sales tax, parking.
Okay, well, that's, uh, for now, um, I got a ton of questions. I was, I was on the Finance Committee at the state, and we have a lot of questions. Um, but I think this is a, a good start. Uh, there are, again, some things I have in here, I saw, I think it was an increase, uh, you know, I've got questions about the Port Authority, the Land Bank, um, I've asked those questions last week, but I really wanna put that in this budget. We're paying the Port Authority two million dollars to buy property. We're paying the Port Authority now eight hundred thousand, according to this, it used to be seven hundred, eight hundred thousand to do, I guess, operations of economic development. Then we've got the Land Bank, and, uh, the Land Bank brings in, uh, two million dollars that we pass over to the Land Bank, and that's a separate contract. I think that's a monopoly. I'd like to have some checks and balances, checks and balances. And hopefully, we'll be able to maybe bring in someone else, another organization, so we can have some checks and balances. Nothing against the Port Authority. Why would I, I, I'm not mad at them, hey, if I can get a contract and you can pay me on this one, this one, and this one, why not? But from our standpoint, there needs to be checks and balances. Uh, so I look forward to, uh, getting a little more detail into that. So, that, uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. I saw the, um, Satellite Office is in there, uh, and I know, I'm not saying it's going to Forest Park, but I could tell you, Forest Park, one of the big things they said, you know, they're a big city in our county, and they have nothing from the county in those areas. So I'm glad to see, uh, some dollars in there, and hopefully, uh, Forest Park, we can work something out with them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, John, if you could please, um, let me know, uh, for the senior levy that we have or we've had, and will be coming up, how much we generate from that levy, uh, when it's passed, I would appreciate that. And then as I look through this, uh, big book, I was looking at the veterans' monies that are allocated, really pretty low. Um, I think it was something like four thousand or something, um, and just wondering, what do we actually do with that money? Do we need to increase? Because I always wondered about, as we went through this COVID, in addition to the other entities that were get- getting money, did we need to give more monies to the Veterans Fund? Um, so if you can kind of let me know what's done with that, I did see, go ahead.
Uh, if you like, the Senior Services is on the breakdown of the All Funds, Bridget, if you can bring up that page. It's also possible that Lisa Webb is on the telephone line and could, could chime in now.
Because I know the Council on Aging, they do fantastic things with seniors.
Yeah, Madam President, I just wanted to add that my comments is in addition to this, because we got still too many seniors. If they own a home, yeah, no, no, I just wanted to let them know it's additional, is what I'm bringing up.
Twenty-nine million is the Senior Services.
Twenty-nine million generated from.
From the property tax.
From, okay, okay. And, um, the veterans, um, what was the? That's not on there, is it?
Veterans is, is, I think it's about a million or so in the general fund.
Okay.
It's in, the, the relief part, portion of that is a few hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. I, I get questions from veterans, I just wanna make sure we're giving them their just due also. Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Dre House.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, a big thanks to Jeff and John, uh, for putting this in front of us today. I also wanna thank the electeds throughout the county that collaborated with you and the other department heads under the county, um, who helped with this process. You gave us their requests, uh, we worked through that and, um, responded to what they need to continue the work that they do for the county. So it, it's, and I like the new look of the All Funds, um, approach to this, instead of just having the general fund in front of us, um, because then the, the levies and the restricted funds are not included at the same time. So this is very helpful, I think it puts everything into context. Um, so I just wanna say that finally, we have a structurally balanced budget that allows us to really invest in our workforce and then continue partnerships throughout the different jurisdictions in Hamilton County, uh, especially through economic development opportunities. And I think that this budget reflects those priorities. And because we have enough revenue right now to accomplish these things, um, with a healthy reserve, I might add, um, that we are able to do more in this budget, especially related to our workforce. Um, and I just do wanna throw out some highlights, because Jeff went through this fairly quickly. But I wanna, just as a reminder, we are paying at least fifteen dollars an hour at the county for our employees. We've got tuition reimbursement in this budget. We've got a new parental leave policy that we passed a couple of months ago. There's training in this budget, the NACO Training for Leadership. Um, we are very committed to having market rate compensation for Hamilton County, as you say, as we compare ourselves to other counties and other entities. We are trying to, uh, balance that out, and this budget creates, uh, adequate wages through a three percent increase across the board. So I'm glad that these things were included here. Uh, we need to dignify the work of the folks that work for Hamilton County, and I think this budget goes a long way in doing that. It also meets some of the needs of the departments that are especially being hard-hit right now and trying to make sure that they've got adequate employees. Uh, JFS comes to mind with, uh, the intake services over there, a critically important rule in the county, and the nine-one-one operators come to mind too. So we are, I know, struggling in those two, um, areas, but we are trying to invest to make sure that we are adequately funded, not only in those two departments, but elsewhere. So, um, I also wanna note that there's some community revitalization money in here. We put one-point-five in the last budget, that one-point-five continues on in this budget, and there's an additional million for what's called a Community Impact Program, we, to, to be named later to something else perhaps. But the idea of kind of targeting in on one community and, um, making sure that we are emphasizing responding to what that community needs, I think is a really great idea. It reminds me of the, the city, I, I can't remember the program over there, but they do something similar. Um, and so I'm glad we're working in partnership with communities to make that happen. And, you know, in partnership with, with. And, you know, in partnership with really all the jurisdictions. So a couple of other highlights, the Department of Economic Inclusion and Equity. I note that there's an additional employee here in the budget. We already have the one employee that was added in the last budget for external work with that department. And now this position is more of an internal position to make sure that we are being true to our promise of making sure that everybody has an opportunity to participate in the contracting and purchasing of the county. It also includes a different way to look at public safety, as you note. There's a lot of diversion activity happening in the county, trying to make sure that if people don't belong in the Justice Center, they don't land in the Justice Center. And we are trying to divert those individuals, whether it's a mental health or addiction issue, to treatment facilities so that we can better serve them and reduce the population in the Justice Center. And then I also note the position regarding youth. We're, we're always trying to include youth as we can in our budget. And so I'm glad that there's an added emphasis on that in this budget. So the, the reserve is twenty-one percent, the industry standard's at least fifteen. So I know that's a good, healthy reserve and I applaud that. I know that, that must have taken some good work with the other elected officials and department heads. So thank you for having those conversations and thank you really to all the staff that have those individual conversations with those department heads. So I'm looking forward to the rest of the process when we hear from the department heads. And I've, I've had the opportunity to sit down with the administrator. We had actually about two hour conversation about the budget because like Commissioner Reese, there's nothing like a good budget. You know, you just, you love to see it. And so I asked many, many of my questions during that. But I have also asked, and I know we all have, to have certain department heads or elected officials come in, especially those that have the bulk of the budget. So that's the sheriff, the court system, which make up the vast majority of this budget. But also, community development, you know, planning, this economic development piece, I think is really important. And so I've asked that some of those folks come in. And so I'm really looking forward to our staff meetings as we hear from some of those electeds and department heads to dig in a little bit on their portions of this budget. And then the public hearings, of course, where we go out into the community and listen and, and get input from the folks that we serve. So, Madam President, I assume that as we work our way through the process and get a little bit closer to the final and after the public hearings, typically we have had an opportunity to do memos from each of the offices, you know, in response to what we're hearing and in response to our own thoughts about what we have had in front of the budget. And Commissioner Reese, you just did some of that. So I will look to have a memo together, likely after the public hearings, to convey to the administration, yeah, anything that's new or interesting that we've heard and maybe some adjustments that can be made here, whether it's taking things out or putting things in. So I didn't know if we should anticipate that process where we all provide a memo and then the administrator collects them and then tries to work that into the final version of the budget.
Certainly, that's the responsible thing for each department to hand in their own memo. And I think, as you were saying after the budget hearing, that would be the best time to do that. So we'll plan on doing that and submitting it to John and to, and to Jeff and his department.
Thank you. And again, just a big thanks to the staff for putting this together. I, I know this is a, an arduous process, but I really do think that it makes, makes really strategic investments, especially in our workforce and these community relationships that we have. And we've got an opportunity this year, unlike other years, where we've got a structurally balanced budget. So again, gives us the opportunity to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to repeat a couple of things that were just said. Really happy about the capital improvements that we're going to be able to do in different county buildings that were delayed because financially we could not do that. So that's a major, major thing for people and where they're working that we can improve those areas. And also what was mentioned earlier is our goal was a fifteen percent reserve. As, as you said, twenty-one percent reserve is just awesome. And lastly, when we talk about we have a structurally balanced budget, that's a big deal. And when we, we said that, I knew that ahead of time, but I wanted to do a flip. There are governments and entities that cannot say that. And we're able to say that we need to be very proud of the ability to be able to say we have a structural. I know we're mandated to have a structurally balanced budget, but we are looking very good as it relates to how we're spending our money and, and also with the bond, bond financing going up. It says a lot about what we're doing with our money. So we will continue this process.
President, just want to also indicate, certainly join with that in terms of, you know, I'm glad you said it, we do, we are mandated to have a structurally balanced budget. But that means that a lot of times they can't fund some important things. We're able to fund a lot of important things, maybe they're not to the tune of what we want. We may make those adjustments, but just like you said, this budget is diversified in both investment and capital as well as human capital. So that is something to be applauded. I just want to say as we go into the budget hearings, again, it's our first budget and one of the things, my style, there'll be people that can come to the hearings and we usually have people who are more comfortable, more familiarized with Hamilton County. There's a lot of people who aren't familiarized with what Hamilton, with county government, not just Hamilton County. But there's a lot of people out there that don't know, what does county government do? There's a lot of people who are, who participate on an ongoing basis. And so I just wanted to say that we will also bring forward, if someone has contacted our office, if I see someone out who's come up to me and asked a question, I'll bring those, try to bring those questions forward so that their voices are also heard. And maybe there's something that they say that we didn't think of, that, you know, we might say, oh, you know, there's times when people bring me something, oh, I didn't think of that, that we might bring forward as well. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that everyone can participate, whether it's physical, whether it's on the Zoom and the technology that we're bringing forward or whether you run into us, we certainly try to bring those, those questions forward as well. So everyone feels, you know, that they're included. And no question is a, no question is a dumb question. I always tell people that, there's no question, there's a dumb question. We, as you say, we take sales tax. So we collect taxes from people who can't even old enough to vote. So a sales tax, you can't get more basic than that. So there's no question that is not intelligent. We'll try to answer those questions as best that we can. So again, I'm looking forward to it, I love this part, this is the part I love, the budget, and looking forward to getting deep into it. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to say that I didn't mean to imply that we don't have a structurally balanced budget every year, because we do. This is a structurally balanced budget that allows us to do what we need to do, the investment and some other things. And that's what, I'm sorry, if I gave the wrong impression, I see John's eyes are getting wide. So yeah, we always structurally balance our budget, but this one's a little different because it's, it's just a little bit more than the bare necessities. And the tax increase of a couple of years ago just allows us to do that. I'm sorry, I hope.
If I could say, Madam President, Commissioners, I think you were all correct. We, in the past, have not, we, we are required to balance our budget. It is not a requirement that it is structurally balanced, meaning that we can see in the future that expenditures and revenues are going to equal each other. So, so you're all correct, that is the difference between this budget and the past budgets. Where we can say this year, you have a lot of governments out there that will dip into reserves and that effectively balances their budget, but it's certainly not structurally balanced. So you're all correct to say that this is a new situation than we have had.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will move forward, our next item. Were you saying something, Jeff?
Noting John's body language.
Okay, thanks, John. Bridgette, do we have anyone on Zoom or anything? Okay, thank you. We'll move forward for comments and motions from the Commissioners, Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to compliment, I talked, I talked earlier that I was at my alma mater, Withrow University High School now, when I was there, it's Withrow International Studies Academy because I had studied Spanish since the first grade and finished at Withrow. But I was out there today, we had a five-one-three relief bus and we didn't plan it this way. But the bus was out there, some of the basketball players who will be going into the season got some shots. Seniors came out to get booster shots. I was leaving and Lincoln Ware was on his way there with booster shots and helping to promote, to get folks, I guess it's the Lincoln Ware Booster Club, getting people to get boosters. But also, we had the economic help out there and we, we always have to cut it off. I mean, people, they said, we're out there since five in the morning. And even though they were offered, you can go online, you could, they said, I'd rather wait. So there were people out there, you know, getting processed to get help, so I want to thank JFS. But didn't know that Withrow, I talked about it last week, Withrow, the first time when I graduated, we got robbed. We weren't allowed to play in the playoffs. You had to get voted in, even though you had a good record. So Withrow now is in the playoffs, they won. Last week, I talked about the first game was at Withrow, they won. And they're on their way now to Pickla and they're going to be going today, I guess this evening, and they play tomorrow. So we were there and they were having a pep rally for the team. I just want to wish them the best of luck. Coach Jones and his staff and Regina Williams, who's the athletic director, doing a good job out there. The football players will be going there, so I just want to wish them luck. And I'm very excited, first time, I believe, in history for the school, for the football team to go this far. And so I just want to wish them luck for tomorrow's game. People who want to go up there, they got to go online and you can, you can Google it, Withrow High School. But they are not selling tickets, they don't sell tickets at the door anymore for the high school games. You have to go online. So I just want to wish them the best. And again, that five-one-three relief bus, right there, the middle of it, so it was pretty exciting. Also, I want to also say that our bus was at the, at the request of the Sheriff's Office, was downtown these past week to be here and help. And that was in partnership with our Sheriff's Office, so I want to acknowledge that. I also got a chance to go and visit the Mount Healthy Health Center when I was on, when I was the state representative. I believe, Commissioner Drehouse, you might have been still there too. But we had voted on money for this new health center. Mrs. Lindsay, who's with the Lincoln Heights Health Center, so she built this new one, so they have two locations. And she has since retired, but she got a chance to see it up. So I had a chance to go and, and view it, it's really nice, built from the ground up in Mount Healthy. And I want to thank Dr. Jolene Joseph, who is now the CEO, for taking us around there. They're going to have dental and, I mean, oral health for dental. And a number of things, I mean, it's just really amazing, all of the services that they provide in a very, very nice facility. So I just wanted to congratulate them and I was happy to be a part of that. Also, I was with the, there for the reopening, re-grand opening of the Hard Rock Casino. And one of the interesting things, the ownership came of Hard Rock International. And I didn't know this, that the Seminole, Seminole Tribe of Florida, Indian Tribe of Florida, they bought Hard Rock International. So we have a minority owned casino in downtown Cincinnati. And it was a lot of folks there smashing the guitars. The only thing is my catcher for the Reds, we just met each other and he was sitting next to the owner, I didn't know he was going to get traded next week or this week. I'm very sad about that, our catcher, I got traded to Detroit. But there were a lot of celebrities there, Bootsy Collins and others that were there. So it was a great, great event. And I know that we get some money from, I saw in our, in our budget, so I want them to get going. And you all get down there because we need those dollars coming here to Hamilton County to our, to our budget. And then, lastly, I wanted to humbly thank the NAACP Cincinnati, Joe Mallory, the president, and Dr. Vanessa White, who was the chairperson of the Freedom Fund Dinner and the entire chapter. I was honored to receive the Ted Theodore M. Barry Award, the first African-American mayor of Cincinnati. Means a lot to me, I've gotten a lot of awards in my lifetime. But growing up, my father was very young then and he was recruited by then Theodore M. Barry to be his chief of staff. And he became the first African-American chief of staff at City Hall. And as a little girl spent some time down there, I hated it, I thought it was boring and I couldn't, why can't I be out with my friends who are playing and having a good time? But Mr. Barry, I always looked up to him as this man of great stature. And then I would always hear the stories at home of how he was always prepared. You never wanted him to go to his briefcase, because when he goes to the briefcase, he's got the budget, he's got the facts, he knows how much money that you receive. And he also was an authentic champion for African-Americans and all people, but particularly African-Americans who were left behind. And at many times wasn't as popular as he is now that he's deceased because he challenged the system. And so a lot of my style, my pattern when I first got elected of Mr. Barry, going to try to make sure I read the budget, make sure I got the facts, challenge when necessary, speak up and do it in an authentic way. So when I got the call to get this award, it just, I never thought as a kid I would ever have anything on the same level of a man that I looked up to so, so much. So I just want to thank them again and thank everybody that came. And I want to thank my Reese team, they surprised me. They, I think the thing was sold out, they were still trying to get tickets. But I just want to thank everyone for that and explain why that award means so very much to me. I just wish my mother could have been there to see it. So, thank you, Madam President, that is all that I have for this week's announcements. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations again on your award. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I was also going to note the, the award, so congratulations on that. So I want to recognize that we've got some folks in the room from Leadership Cincinnati. So Amy Thompson is the one that organizes this group every year. And the idea is to take folks that are interested in moving around the community, learning more about the community. And today they're learning about, more about county government. So they came on the right day because we just went through the budget process. And so welcome to the county, I want to say to them. But Mike Baker from the United Way was kind of the ringleader in getting them in the room. So welcome to our meeting, I hope it's been informative so far. The other thing I wanted to recognize is that we just, we had an election day and I want to congratulate those that got elected. I was especially interested in the Wyoming race and glad with the results there. But congratulations to those that got elected, a big thanks to the candidates, those that did not get elected but yet were willing to put themselves out there and run for political office. It's not an easy thing to do all the time and so big thanks to them. The BOE did a really nice job, it was a very smooth election, there were no problems. And so congratulations especially to Sherry Poland and Alex Linsor over at the BOE for a flawless election. We did get the results relatively early too, so that's a good thing. And then ultimately, it was the voters that made it happen. So thanks to the folks that turned out to vote and participated in the democratic process on Tuesday. It was a chilly day, but it was a sunny day, it was a good day for Cincinnati. Lastly, I just wanted to mention, I represented the Commission at the Queen City Book Bank opening down in Queensgate. It is a big warehouse where they're giving away books, especially targeted to K through, I think, grade four to make sure kids are ready to, to learn and to read. And it's a, was a huge effort, the Blue Manatee Bookstore and then Literacy Network partnered in this. And so it was a great celebration and, you know, just a great asset to our community to help kids learn. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, President.
Yes.
He was in here, Councilmember-elect Drehouse.
Didn't want to mention anybody specific.
Thank you. I want to also thank the leadership group that came today. I'm going to make my comments short because I want to go back with you guys when you go talk about us in this meeting. But anyway, just a few comments. I also attended the NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner and it was just excellent and they do excellent work as we know throughout our county. And I was the keynote speaker at a event called Taking the Road Less Traveled, which was at the City Link Center and they wanted me to give a testimony on my road to how I got here. And I thank them so much for allowing me to, to do that. And then I met with a labor representative from Local 265, who, they came in to talk to me about their input as it relates to the Finley Street Garage and making sure that we don't forget about unions in that process. So we had a conversation, I'm sure we'll have a couple more and I'll be talking to Jeff about some of their issues that they brought to me. And that's about all I have for that. I'll move on to, yes.
Of our group, I want to also say, he was our clerk and now he's the mayor of Cincinnati. Want to just say congratulations to Aftap Purval. Want to just say congratulations to AfTap Pureval. I know you'll be leaving the clerk's office, but he'll be down the street as the mayor. So congratulations.
Yeah. Congratulate everybody, for sure. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam President. One comment and then a few by leaves for you. Just to double down on congratulating, on congratulating Sherry and Alex out of the Board of Elections on a great job in local government, as this board knows many times. You're only visible when something goes wrong. And the Boards of Election are maybe a prime example of that, as we've seen in the past. So this, they did a fantastic job, as they always do. So I just wanted to congratulate Sherry and Alex and all the staff out of the BOE for a great job this Tuesday and for the work that they did before that, and will continue to do for several weeks here. A couple of by leaves on your agenda. These kind of go in groups of two. There, you have by leave one and by leave two, three and four, and five and six, and then we'll get to seven separately. But one, the first three groups are all related to annexations. The board had received these petitions for annexations in the past. They came to the Board of County Commissioners. We referred them to the county engineer to ensure that the annexation, the petitions were correct. And for those who may be watching, or maybe you're not familiar, when counties get these, we refer them to the county engineer to do things like check, to make sure the legal description matches up, to make sure the lot lines are all consistent, to make sure that they're not, an annexation is not creating a landlocked piece of property, that type of thing. If there's a problem, they come back to the board and say they have to reject it. And we then, the engineer then gets back to the petitioner to revise the petition. So that has been done. You remember, in these particular cases, I believe the engineer found that there was an error in the petition where there was a, this is the type of annexation where it was petitioned as a type of annexation where there was only one property owner, the annexing municipality itself, in this case, the Indian Hill. But they found that there was another property owner involved and had to get the consent of that property owner. So there's three annexations where there's land going from either Sims Township or Columbia Township to Indian Hill. These are, for the most part, these are all parcels being annexed that are owned now by Indian Hill. And no taxation value to the other, to the other communities, either Sims or Columbia Township. So I know there's been communication between Indian Hill and the townships on this. And so you have two items on your agenda for each of these. One is accepting the report from the engineer on the revised petition and then a resolution granting the annexation from Sims or Columbia respectively into the Village of Indian Hill. So, Madam President, I'm happy, I don't know if it makes sense to approve one and two together, three and four together, and five and six together, or just one through six altogether, whatever your preference.
If my colleagues are comfortable, but with one through six. I'd like to make a motion to approve item, by leaves, one through six.
Second.
Commissioner Semardim.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Madam President. And the final by leave is by leave number seven in your packet. This is a resolution reappointing one member to the Downtown Cincinnati Improvement District Council, or better known as DCID. So DCID is a special improvement district that has properties from Eggleston Avenue on the east, Central Parkway bounds it to the north, and Central Avenue on the west. Since the county has buildings within that, within that geographic area, we have a representative on this particular Special Improvement District, Harry Blanton, has been our historic representative on this. The reappointment has not been made yet, and they have an annual meeting coming up next week. So we wanted to bring this by leave to the board to make that appointment of Mr. Blanton back to the DCID so that he is capable of acting on the organizational items next week at their meeting on the 10th. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to open it up for discussion. Our Vice President Reese, by leave seven.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have a question. Last week, we made an appointment, I guess a reappointment, no, a new appointment, to the Over the Rhine Improvement District, and then this is the Downtown Improvement District. And just wanted to kind of get an understanding of that. As we're moving forward, I'll just be honest with you. I'd like to see some diverse thought, certainly reflective of what our board is moving forward with. And so, when you look at downtown or over the Rhine, these improvement districts, you don't see diversity on some of these boards. So just wanted to just really point that out, that I'm not one to just keep the same people all the time. And I want to make sure that whoever we put on whatever boards there are, they are reflective of the, the new thoughts and the things that we are interested in. You know, there's a lot of buildings being sold. They go from affordable to unaffordable. There's contracts that come through there because they've got to keep it looking a certain way. I'm not sure if this is the same group that is 3CDC over both these groups, or is this a different group? I'm just not familiar with it. So could you?
Yeah, so 3CDC does the staff support and coordinates this group as well, yes.
Okay, as well as the Over the Rhine.
As well as the Over the Rhine, as well, I believe.
Well, Madam President, I'll move forward with it today, but in the future, I'd like to have a little more notice than yesterday saying, I'd like to put this on as a by leave. And I do want to put on the record that I'd like to see those boards, these downtown boards, to be more diversified in thought. So, you know, some of the stuff they've been doing is good, but maybe there's some new things. And I just want to make sure that whatever we are saying is reflective of whoever is our representation on those boards. So this is, again, two boards. I remember, I think, DCI used to be its own board, and I believe it was acquired by 3CDC. And certainly, I'm familiar with 3CDC, helped start them when I was on council. But really want to make sure that, from our perspective, that we have some diverse thought sitting at those tables.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adopt by leave seven. Commissioner Semardim.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. No further by leaves.
Thank you so much. You have before you our regular agenda, items one through 12. Is there any discussion on any of those items?
Madam President, I would move that item number one be taken up because I'm not supporting that item number one. Item number one is $600,000, I believe. Or can you maybe talk about it? That's the only one that I have an issue with.
Madam President, yeah, happy to. So that, as the board recalls, the county had charged the Port Authority with acquiring and demolition of the Millennium Hotel through bonds that were issued through the CFA, that the bonds funded the capital costs associated with that acquisition and demolition. The port has incurred some additional soft costs associated with that project, one of which was anticipated initially, and that was some ground leases that were acquired as a part of the overall acquisition of the Millennium that we did not want to bond and pay interest for. But there are also, as the board is aware, some litigation costs as well associated with that. So the port has put forward a request to the county of $600,000. It's really split about half and half between the soft costs associated with the lease and legal and litigation costs. Some of those legal costs are associated with contracting work that happened initially right after the bond issuance, but a portion of that does relate to the litigation costs. So it's roughly split down the middle on that. So that's the, that is the background behind this particular.
Madam President, I have a question. Because the last time we met, it said that the legal fees are going to be $600,000. So you're saying that, and this says $600,000, you're saying now the legal fee is only $300,000?
So the port has incurred probably more legal costs than this. This is what they've come to us at this point with. So whether or not there is any additional payment to be made, or whether the county would assist additionally as a conversation we'd have in the future at this point in time, we're only recommending this allocation at this point.
Madam President, I'd like to follow up with that. So the day we met, was first, when I first heard of this, it was $600,000 for legal costs. So now you're saying that they're only going to want $300,000, but then they might want more. I know on November 4th, it came out that they lost the case on the Millennium Hotel. It's going to cost $5 million. Are we asked to pay that? Who's paying that?
I have not had a conversation with the port about that, Commissioners. And I have not yet heard from the port as to what their position is going to be, as to how they're responding to that, to that litigation, to the litigation and the decision of the judge on that, the summary judgment that was made. So until I know that, I can't make a statement as to, as to what they would approach us on.
Yeah, I just, I don't know why we would be moving forward on a fee, and we don't know what the final fee is. We're saying that $600,000 today. There might be something more. We're not sure. But I don't want to hold it up. I just want to move it out so I could vote, no, I wasn't here for that. And I was very vocal to say I wasn't supportive of paying any legal fees. And now we got a potential $5 million development fee they just lost that we might see again. So if we could maybe, I would like to move for separation of item one.
Let's have further discussion.
Madam President, this is part of our regular agenda, so we're not even in the consent agenda yet. So it does stand alone, right? So I just want to say that I am grateful to the port for being willing to be our partner in the acquisition of this property. We're talking about the Millennium property that is to the east of the convention center. We've worked for decades trying to get this property under control. We finally had an opportunity to do it. We seized the opportunity, and here we are with our partners having incurred some fees related to leasing of that property and some litigation fees. And so I'm happy to support this resolution. I do not know what the future holds related to the litigation that, there was a judgment made a couple days ago. I don't think any of us know, you know, where this is going to head. But I am sure about the idea that, you know, once we got control of this property, things have now started to move in the convention district. And we are starting to look towards the future of not only expansion of the convention center, but all the properties around the convention center related to a headquarters hotel and just a broader campus so that we have a coordinated effort with the city in that area. And so this was the first piece. The county stepped up and got this property under control when no one else could do it. And the port was our partner in that. So I want to honor the agreement, and I will be supporting item number one.
Madam President.
Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate, I was not here at that time. I come from the tourism industry myself, very well-versed in it, was the deputy director of tourism for the state of Ohio. If I were here, I think we could have got a different deal. The convention hotel is not going to Millennium. And expansive convention center is years down the road. Nobody's going to fund it right now. So there's, the convention center will stay as it is, and the only thing that's really being considered is across the street, which is property that was already acquired by 3CDC available with no, none of our necessarily involvement. Now, we will look at what do we want for the district. But we just have a difference of opinion on that. And I think certainly with my expertise in this area, I may, could have maybe put something forward that could have been possibly a better deal. With that, I cannot support this, and this is a judgment of $5 million. We don't know what next we're going to be asked to pay for. We're $600,000. We told it was $600,000. Now it's 50% of $600,000, but then we need another $300,000 for something else. But we might come back with something else. It's just not the responsible thing to do, in my, in my opinion, based on what I know. So therefore, I just cannot support this today.
Thank you. Thanks. So let me make a couple of comments. During the process of voting whether or not the Millennium should be acquired or demolished, there were, of course, three commissioners. I was the one that said, no, I was not in agreement with the acquisition or the demolition of the Millennium. But due to the point and the fact that we're in the middle of this process, the demolition has already started, there are costs to this. And so because the costs are there, we need to, as was said earlier, fulfill our commitment and then move forward. You can't just leave a big hole in the ground downtown. So I certainly am on record for not supporting this, but I will support item number one. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Semardim.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
No.
Thank you. Let's move to item number two, the engineer, under our regular agenda item. Hello?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. Todd Long here for the engineer's office today. Eric Beck's in Columbus today, so he could not be a part of today's proceedings. Item number two on our regular agenda is a resolution awarding a contract to the lowest and best bidder, First Star Safety LLC, for the 2021 thermoplastic and epoxy pavement striping program in the total amount of $354,356, which is under the engineer's estimate of $408,258.25. This particular type of line striping is something that allows us to have a longer, a little bit longer longevity of the product that allows almost two years for these. We use them for stop bars in specific areas in some of our long line stripings. So it's a product that we like to put down in a contract each year. If there are any questions on this item, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Thank you. Are there any questions on item two? I'd like to make a motion to approve item two. Commissioner Semardim.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items three, four, and five are each municipal road fund oriented. So in this particular aspect, it comes out of our permissive auto funding. The commission did have hearings on May 27th to approve a list of 11 particular projects. Each of these items are either on that list, or one of them is actually from last year's list. It takes a little while for some of the communities to execute the proper paperwork, move those things forward. The commission did approve in June 17th meeting the overall list of items. I can certainly go through each one of these individually as we go through them, but that's the overarching for each of those items. So item three is a resolution authorizing an agreement relative to the improvement of North Bend Road between the city of Chiviot and the Board of County Commissioners in the amount of $158,200.
You can continue.
Continue. All right. Item four is a resolution authorizing an agreement relative to the improvement of Compton Road between the city of Wyoming and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners in the amount of $109,500, rather. And the final resolution is authorizing an agreement relative to the improvement of Red Bank Road between the city of Cincinnati and the Hamilton County Commissioners for $126,500. Is there any question?
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions? No question. I'd like to make a motion to adopt items three through five.
Second.
Commissioner Semardim.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Our next item is MSD.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for entertaining these items today. MSD presents two items for your consideration and requests adoption, if you so choose. Item number six is a request for additional design funding for the Polk Run Voice Water Treatment Plant Sludge Storage Tank and Odor Control Project. Request is for $423,548 in additional funding. This project accomplishes two things in its, in its purpose. And number one is to deal with odor issues and to reach the state of enforcing the January 2017 zero tolerance odor policy that the board had established for MSD, as well as it deals with basically providing the type of project that is recommended in the MSD 2019 solids management handling plan to improve solids handling at the Polk Run Treatment Plant through expanding its storage volume, as well as mitigating, again, odors. The request, as I indicated, is for additional design funding. And the original design funding that was incorporated in MSD's 2020 CIP has proven to be insufficient, in part because the project, as it moved through its planning phases and created a business case evaluation, indicated that additional work was necessary for the project to be successful, to be in compliance both with the solids management plan as well as achieving the odor, zero tolerance odor policy. So the additional funding will also accommodate- So the additional funding will also accommodate designing of the demolition of existing storage tanks, sludge storage tanks, adjacent empty tanks and pump building, construction of three new 87,000 gallon concrete storage tanks within the existing footprint, installation of hydraulic mixing and non-potable water systems for tank cleaning, construction of a new pump building with electrical and mechanical rooms for space and space for maintenance, and installation of a new odor control system for the new tanks. If you have any questions, with me today is Matt Spadari, who is Principal Engineer in Wastewater Engineering, as well as my colleague Lauren DeGracia with the Director's Office.
Thank you. I'm really trying to wrap my head around this major designing addition of $400,000. And that's major in how we ended up having to request that much money when they already looked at the project, got in there, and we needed all those different additional designs. Who's here with you?
Mr. Spadari, if he would come to the podium.
It's major.
Address some.
What's the total? What's the total project? What is the total project?
The total project cost is $9,545,173.
Thank you. Hi.
Good afternoon. So as Jack indicated, the original planning estimate was conceived during a pre-planning, a very high-level conceptual estimate when we were doing some, you know, high-level planning. And then as we dove deeper during our planning exercise and during the business case evaluation, we had determined that that high level or that conceptual plan that we had determined initially wasn't adequate to meet our objective for the project. Like we had done a, you know, analysis of the condition of the existing tanks and realized they needed either a significant rehab or a replacement, as well as additional storage for our plant operations than we originally thought that we needed. So those couple items increased the scope of the project, increased the construction costs, and also thereby then necessitated additional design than we originally thought.
I would think with our systems in general being so antiquated, that we would assume that when we go in, the pipes or whatever would be worse than we thought because you don't know until you go in. And so we basically underestimated until we went in.
You are correct. During that high-level planning effort initially, we did not, since that was a pretty, it was a district-wide solid master plan, so we were visiting all our facilities across the district. And then at the specific one, Polk Run, we did, the part of that scope was not to do an internal, like a condition assessment. So I understand what you're saying, that we do do that during our projects, but when we had identified the initial design amount, we had not done that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Vice President Reese.
No questions.
Yes, I just am wondering where this wastewater treatment plant is located.
Lublin-Madera Road.
Okay.
Polk Runs in Lublin, right by the Lublin-Madera exit of 275.
Okay.
It's in Sims Township, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item six.
Second.
Commissioner Semardu.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item seven is for entry into your record. It's a majority-supported, citizen-initiated petition for local sewers requesting MSD to design and construct on various streets, Beach Street, Much More Road, Elm Street, and Orchard, which are located in Columbia Township and in the city of the Village of Indian Hill. The request is majority-supported, and as I indicated, the polling that was done as a result of the petition yielded a 56.5% level of support from the 23 benefited or potentially benefited properties that would be involved in this particular project. And the current request is indicated is to simply enter into the record, into the Commissioners' minutes. MSD will be following up in the first quarter of 2022 with a request for design funding.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? I'd like to make a motion to receive into the record item number seven.
Second.
Commissioner Semardu.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. Yeah, before you can send agenda items eight through 12, are there any comments as relates to any of those items? No, no comments? Commissioner Greenhouse? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve items eight through 12.
Second.
Commissioner Semardu.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional comments, Vice President Reese?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have one comment about, we have people who are applying for the different services, and we take their phone numbers. Some people had to take phone numbers, had to get back to them, they gotta give us more information. And I just wanted to bring up a technology, potential technology issue. When we call back sometimes on the phones, it says on your cell phone, most people operate from their cell phones, it says scam. So when they calling from Hamilton County number, it says scam. The reason why this is important is because we also are out there, our public safety folks, police, et cetera, warning senior citizens and others about scams. Don't, you know, fraud is out there, scams are out there. So when they see the word scam, I know I do, you know, ignore. And even if you leave a message, we not sure if that's, is that really Hamilton County? So they're not expecting, when Hamilton County government calls, that it comes up as a scam or no ID. So I don't know, as we're looking at our telephone situation and our technology folks, what can we do? Because we're missing some people who probably think that it's a scam, but it's not necessarily a scam. At the same time, we want to make sure if it is a scam, people not getting pulled into scams. So I know that's a technology question. I don't know the answer to it, but that's one of the complaints that we got. And I know personally, because I was called from Hamilton County and it said, it's a scam. And of course, I didn't answer.
Okay. Madam President, if I could just briefly, we can absolutely check into that, especially as we're doing some installation work on the new phone system. A lot of the phone lines run through the same trunk. And so as most of you know, that when you get a call from a landline here in Hamilton County, it comes up 9999. And I can understand in some people's phone services, it might come up now, especially now that there's more advanced fraud detection, that type of thing, that it will come up as a potential telemarketer scam, that type of thing. So we can check into that and see if there's anything we can do there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Greenhouse. Thank you. I have nothing. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.